Good evening, councilors and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our last meeting of the year 2015. It has been two long years, and obviously, I think it would be a break for the Christmas, which would be something nice to enjoy. I'm going to ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask Councilor Giovanni Rodriguez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Counselor Vasquez.
Presson.
Counselor LaPlante.
Here.
Counselor Toomey.
Here.
Counselor Reyes.
Presson.
Counselor Almonte.
(Laughter).
Counselor Rodriguez.
(Laughter).
Counselor Abdu.
Noted.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
President.
And Counselor President, Malo Naro.
I would like to mention that Counselor Abdu have excused himself for personal reasons. Councilors, we will move right along into the public participation. And the first person that I would like to call in is George Bukalil. Please identify yourself and make sure you adhere to the time that is given.
Okay. Hi, my name is George Peter Bukalil. I am from Trendy Bracelets, I represent Trendy Bracelets. Today, I'd like to speak to City Council about a matter concerning the city. I feel as though a couple of things are being left uncorrected. One is the fire hydrants outside of the City Hall. It's -- needs to be fixed. It's below -- it's under -- it's over eight feet. It's city regulations, and it's right in front of a parking spot. Secondly, I'd like to speak about schools. The schools, I feel as though we need to correct a way of conducting the normal school teaching. We need kids to have a notebook, which would be a laptop or a computer. That way, they can save everything on a hard drive. Also, I feel as though they should have headphones, so that they would be able to, you know, basically be able to talk, you know, interact with the teacher without, you know, having to hear over others. Also, so I feel as though we shouldn't -- we need solar-powered roads and walkways. The reason being is we spend so much, I think it's a hundred, a hundred million, and it's way too much, and I think we need to spend the money on perfecting the art and conserving our money and our funds, so that in turn, that will come back to us. That could -- won't get us off the deficit, but it will, you know, reflect on a growing economy, which would be solar, which Barack Obama has, you know, put solar roads and, you know, you know, solar energy out there, and the turbines that we have in Boston. We need to somehow, you know, you know, use that and kind of interlace it into our, you know, normal growing growth in the town. Also, I'd like to speak about the police officers. The police officers are going out on the road, and they don't have full-body armor. I feel as though it's kind of childish to say this, but I don't feel as though they should be out on the road right now. You know, there's no upcoming events happening, it's just a normal United States, but we do have a little thing we need to clear up. And it's cops need helmets and total body armor. You know, we do have that, and I feel as though, you know, it's a great way of growing.[296.83][296.83](Beep). Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next person in line is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dick Russell. I still live at 34 Cross Street. First, I would like to thank a former counselor, an outgoing counselor, for all the hard work he did on the city's behalf while serving as an elected official. On to other things. I tried to come up with an appropriate Christmas present for the council, but I could not find a lump of coal big enough, so I decided to give you a dose of your own medicine. A resolution came to mind. Whereas you wanted to question some of the mayor's executive decisions. Whereas you purchased the new school department headquarters in executive session. Whereas you backed the residency rule requirement for the city employees. Whereas you backed the Safe Driver Resolution. Whereas you backed the so-called Sanctuary City Ordinance. Whereas you made all kinds of allegations about the integrity of the Budget and Finance Committee. Whereas several of you endorsed the recall. Whereas several of you ignored campaign issues in the recent election and allowed the media to dictate the election outcome. Whereas council leadership appears to be deaf to the concerns of residents. I have therefore determined the best gift for most of the city council is the number 655. 655 being the number of signatures that the first recall fell short. I do apologize to any of the members of the council, but the phrase guilt by association does seem to apply. Will my resolution do anything to resolve the issues that have plagued this body for the last two years? Probably not, but hopefully, it will wake up the incoming leadership to its responsibility to the cities of the city, the citizens of Lawrence, those that elected you and pay your salary. Now, on a personal side, my own smaller gift to you is that the council won't have to put up with any of my politically astute comments until January 19th of next year. With that, I wish to wish you all a politically incorrect holiday season. Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Festivus to the rest of us, and Merry Christmas to all, and to all good night.[440.62][440.62](Laughter).
The next person in line is Mr. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizen, grateful to Honorable Toomey for his sacrifices on behalf of our citizen. He has been example of how to be an active citizen. Thank you, in behalf of eighty-three thousand citizen. Thank you to Honorable Toomey for everything he has done for our city. Our city has been great because of members such as Toomey. We grateful to him forever. Mayor Rivera campaigned promise of safe Lawrence only possible you as our elected official, and Mayor Rivera's support of our police department and the Senior Officers Union. Our police department, under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick, has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been so great because of our hard-working DPW worker, FU workers, and the best leadership. Our DPW workers are the best. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our DPW workers in their collective bargaining. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support of our firefighters and their union. Our public school, under leadership of Honorable Superintendent Rowley, moving forward. Turnaround plan has created more Level One school, more higher school graduate. We, the citizen, support our teachers and the great union. We, the citizen, in a city that has been divided because of the recall, we demand of you and Mayor Rivera, respect the desire of the citizen. If the citizen want recall, this is not can be stopped by any court or any legal movement. Thank you.
The next person is Joe DeMiko.
Joe DeMiko, 11 Lorenzo Road. In forty years that I've been coming to the city council meetings, this is going to be the one of my better speeches, and it's off the wall. I come before you to show support to the employees of Politech that are losing their jobs. I believe the city of Lawrence and the state should demand from Politech and its venture capital group a sum of twenty million dollars if they leave. My reasoning for this is in 2005, they received a grant of 1.5 million dollars for R&amp;D, and in 2007, they received an 8.5 million dollar contract with the government for worn clothing for our troops. With this knowledge, they were able to expand their product line for different companies worldwide and made millions. In other note, has any one of our military delegations hoop in the past, 2005, which were Marty Mann, Carrie Disongas, Bass? Where are they now? I want them to repay the city and the employees. We should pay card them the following companies: L.L. Beam, Sealy Corporation, and Lotface. If they think they are putting in and going to continue on, if Politech thinks they're going to be putting in apartments in there, do you know when Section Eight or affordable housing, their rent is 12% more expensive than fair market value? Which means that the taxpayers of the city are treated unfairly, and that's why developers continue to come into our city. And that includes all different -- Wynn, and all the other nonprofits. They make millions and millions of dollars. Thank you.
The next person in line is Mark LaPlante.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, councilors. A couple of weeks ago, something pretty special happened in my district. We were really pleased to see the opening of the Engine Nine Fire Station on Bailey Street. It was a really important development. It is providing a lot of resources as far as firefighters that are there now to be able to protect a significant quadrant of the city. And I was there with Mayor Rivera, Representative Devers, firefighters, et cetera. But one of the things I wanted to raise today and talk about real briefly, and just to mention, was the DPW workers who took the time, effort, and professionalism to make that fire station look especially sharp, clean, and worthy of living. They did a fantastic job. So I wanted to inform you, Council President, and the rest of my colleagues, of these individuals in the DPW who made a huge difference in making that fire station look really good. Rafael Gadea, who's an electrician. Louis Gotay, who's a carpenter. Keith Hamblin, who's a painter-carpenter. Claude Marquis, who is a painter. And Ed Paris, who's a plumber. These five individuals did a great job, and I just wanted to take this time to thank them especially for the good work that they did and the kind of professionalism and pride that they took. And I would invite every one of you, Council President or the rest of our colleagues, to take a chance and take an opportunity to visit that place and just see what kind of, what kind of great work that they did at that fire station. Thank you.
The next person in line is James Toomey.
Good evening, Council President, councilors. My name is James Toomey. I'm from 8 Sampson Street, and I'm here tonight to just speak briefly about a gentleman who I call my father, Roger Toomey, and celebrate his moving on from the city council and all of the years that he's served this great city. As I think back on our founding fathers and how they developed our system of government and the debates that they had, and the many things that they discussed, they had very, very differing opinions on how to design and develop this great country. And in doing so, they, they found two things that were very needed for the successful exit, for the successful design of our system. One of those was a citizenry that was a participant in the process, educated, and paying attention to what's going on around them. And also, elected leaders who had a significant moral compass, who understood their duties and took them very seriously and with a sense of integrity. And I can honestly say that as I've watched my father serve this great city for the time that he has, I believe he's lived up to that standard and has done so very honorably and has done so from the heart, with a great sense of faith and love for this city. I'm very proud to say that I'm his son, and I'm also very proud of all the work that he's done for us in this community. And I think he has set such a wonderful example for all of you, all of our elected leaders in not only the local level, but the state level and the federal level. If we had more people like Roger Toomey serving our great country, we'd be in a much better position. And so, with that said, I'd like to say, thank you, Dad, for serving our great city and all the time and effort that you put in, and to my mom as well for supporting him all these years. Without her, I don't think you could have accomplished, you know, behind every man is a great woman, right? So, again, congratulations to my mom for all her support for all these years, and on to the next thing, Dad, right? On to the next thing.
The next and last person, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, is Keith Woodley. Waterka, sorry.[1031.06][1031.06](Laughter).
A fact to follow. Keith Waterka, 500 Merrick Street. Not only a small business owner in the city of Lawrence, but president of the Tower Hill Neighborhood Association and chairman of ELNAP, the Lawrence Neighborhood Association Partnership. I just wanted to speak to the council tonight and not only say some tremendous words on how Counselor Toomey has attended so many neighborhood association meetings, not only Tower Hill. I can probably count on one hand the amount of meetings in eight years that he's missed. But I also want to congratulate our new elected counselor on Tower Hill for District D and continued counselor for District C, and we look forward to the next two years of having two working councilors up on the Tower Hill community and whatever we can do to support the two of you, along with our councilors at large. We look forward to doing so. But in the last eight years, I've had the honor of working with Counselor Toomey and what he has accomplished and done, and I've been privileged to know a lot of the work he does behind the scene that a lot of people don't know. And if I have half the energy he does doing a job like this, I'll be happy, because he just does not stop, and he always did what he believed was right by the community, and I commend him for that. And I know a lot of my fellow neighborhood association presidents feel the same way, and whenever you put a call in, you always took that call and always worked to resolve the issue for the neighborhood associations and the residents. It's, you're truly going to be missed, and the person take coming in is going to have a tough void to fill. But we like to encourage, the neighborhood associations like to encourage this council to continue on with the Adopt a Park program to keep Lawrence clean. Thank you, Roger, and best of luck to 2016 counselor. Remember, certain counselors, short is, right to the point is the best, so.[1182.58][1182.58](Applause).
We will now move into public hearings, and we will start with Document 18815, Handicap Parking.
Document 188, 2015, notices hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 15th, in Council Chambers on Commons Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be amended by adding a following new paragraph to the handicap parking section concerning Howard Street, "Aside from .320 feet northerly of the intersection of Pleasant Street to .340 feet northerly of the intersection of Pleasant Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity."
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in regard to Document 18815? If there is none, I'm going to close public participation. Councilors, what is your preference? What is your wish?
Motion to, motion to approve and waive the 30 days.
There's a motion on the floor to approve and waive the 30 days. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, continue with Document 22315.
Document 223, 2015. Notice is hereby given the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 15th, in Council Chambers, 200 Commons Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be amended by adding following new paragraph to the municipal code concerning parking on designated streets to institute a permit parking program to be inserted in proper alphabetical order at Cedar Street, from the intersection of Hampshire Street westerly to the intersection of Shaden Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, published on December 8th.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf of against Document If there is none, I'm going to close public participation. Councilors, what is your preference?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and properly seconded to waive the 30 days, to approve and waive the 30 days. If there is no discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess my question is to Counselor Stella.
Yep.
Reyes. Is this person going to park on one side of the street knowing that we have another ordinance that is going to start tonight that indicate that parking is going to be alternative?
Yes. Yep.
Is this person aware of the ordinance?
She is aware of that.
All right. That's my question.
No other questions?
Counselor President.
Yes.
Just a question. This is not for, the question is for Counselor Reyes. This is not for any one person. This is for the block.
It's not only for one person. It's only three houses in the block, and they are three aware of.
And their issue is that they can't find parking where they live?
Yes.
So that's the reason for?
Handic, I mean, yeah, sticker park, yep.
And would it be? Oh, I thought that was, is there a time frame?
It is not a time frame, and the reason they put that in request, that is because in the school days or weekdays, Central Catholic, which is across the street, they take all the space and absolutely no place in the house right in the corner, which they supposed to be parking on Hampshire Street. They using Cedar Street instead, and they have to be parking like three blocks away, and it's only three houses.
Right. That was a similar problem that people had in Prospect Hill that we wanted to address. Orlando Jimenez had asked us for that. Maybe we should revisit that come the next.
Okay. Just a point of information, this situation, Cedar Street is a similar situation in many streets around Central Catholic.
Yes.
Many residents in there, homeowners, have complained that during games and also during in the morning, students park all around the neighborhood, and they take all the parking space. I had a conversation with the principal of Central Catholic to see whether they could help in the situation by asking students to park in the parking lot of the Central Catholic. What happens is that a lot of students park in the surrounding area, so that when the school is over, they can get, they can get out and move fast out of there, and that is causing problems with the residents. So that is something that, that in the near future, this council may have to address to solve the same problem that Cedar Street is facing.
All right. Mr. President, is Cedar Street part of the list that is allowed to park during this ban right now that is going on, starting tonight?
Yes.
All right. Another thing is, we have an ordinance that we should implement, and we should ticket people that park violating the ordinance. The ordinance is going to start tonight, and the bans indicate that anybody that is parked from 12 to 3, that including those times, should be ticketed. So I believe that we should enforce it, because one way or another, those are there, and if, if it is affecting the neighbors.
It is.
Especially people that live there, we should address that in the meantime, and we should somehow try to come up with a, with an idea or a permanent residence parking on that area, because I have personally have done studies, similar studies in Newton for students that park around the high school, and it's, it affects totally the neighbor, and we should think about that if it is, if it is a big deal for the neighbors. So we shouldn't be waiting for, to just fix the issue street by street. We should take it as a whole and look at the whole neighbor. And it should be a recommendation for Counselor Stella, that is your area, and think about that situation, too.
That is a great point, but my reason to hurry with this is because, especially this person, she doesn't want a handicap parking, which she really should have one, and the days that she has to do like grocery shopping is really hard for her just to park in front of the house. So whenever something new comes, or we can enforce whatever we have, then we can change whatever we need to change. But at this point, I just want to go ahead and, and approve this.
Yep.
Counselor Reyes, you may want to include a specific discussion on that particular area for next year.
Right. Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
And I would like to ask that the, maybe the district councilor, so they don't feel stepped on, but I know that we have an issue on similar issues in Prospect Hill.
Definitely.
And I don't know if any other councilors, district councilors may be concerned about similar things, and also the one about how to direction of traffic is another reason for us to start looking at all of the, at the city as a whole, as people say.
Definitely. Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote. The motion has been made and properly seconded and waived the 30 days. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 27015.
Document 270, 2015, notices hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 15th, 2015, in City Council Chambers, 200 Commons Street, Lawrence, Mass. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence by adding a following new paragraph to the stop sign section of the municipal code to be inserted in proper order. West Street, northbound drivers on West West Street, northbound drivers on West Street at Manchester Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against this document? If there is none, councillor, what is your preference?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, this is the whole business with the T, and obviously, a lot of the officers that have come before Officer Scanlon have always sort of recommended that we not put a stop sign because it's automatically a stop given that it's a T. Problem is that people still speed down there, and there's no control either way. So we have to be able to get them to see that they have to stop before they cross in a gathering. That is also Counselor Vasquez's concern.
Yes, discussion, please.
Yes, go ahead.
To me, this is... I would like to speak with the officer in regard of the intersection because according to the MEUTCD, which is the federal regulations, we should have control intersection at... Any intersection should be controlled. It can be... There is different type of controls. It can be a yield sign, which is not used in Massachusetts, but most recommended stop signs. And on any intersection that go to a mayor, to a mayor or a main line, which is basically in this case, Manchester Street, from West Street, I truly believe that is recommended. And because we... In Massachusetts, we have to follow the guidance. And the guidance established that if we have more than 6,000 vehicles going through one intersection to a main line, it should be controlled. On a intersection, always should have a control on the minor approach. And in this case, West Street, which is a very busy, very extremely busy intersection, a commercial and residential street, we should recommend it on this area, and not only in this area, throughout the city. Because we have had that problem for many, 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 many years here in the city of Lawrence, and just because we have the problems, we should allow it. Another situation is that it is... It shouldn't be our job to go around and look for intersections like this that require an intersection. It should be... We should have every intersection in the city of Lawrence evaluated and recommended to the city, to the councillor, to the councils, to have control. Because if we look for public safety, this is one of the reasons why sometimes we have people going across one intersection that is controlled, because most likely, they find many other intersections that is not controlled. I would like to speak to whoever is not recommending this to see why. Because according to the MEUTCD, federal regulation, and state regulations, we always should have control intersections. If it is more than 6,000 cars going across, that's one point. If it's going to prevent, if it's going to prevent at least one accident a year, it should be controlled. And according to the report we get here, only one reported accident happened on that intersection. But that doesn't mean that only one accident happened. It was one reported. That intersection makes extremely dangerous, and it should be a stop sign, not now, 2015, almost 2016. A hundred year ago, a hundred years ago, we should have that intersection controlled. It's extremely frustrating to me to see that we have to go around and chase those type of situations and bring it to the City Council. We should have the city engineer, we should have the DPW, look into it, and recommend every intersection that is in the city of Lawrence to be controlled, because this is a public safety issue.
Thank you.
A point of information...
Yes, go ahead.
I know that we have the pleasure of having Counselor Rodriguez here for the first time, but the police department does have traffic control. And it would be up to, I guess, asking them to do some kind of study, but for a very long time, Counselor Colophilus has been screaming and yelling about how we need a traffic study. And he was absolutely right. But apparently, there wasn't enough money to do it. So we need to be talking to the police department about it, and also maybe trying to get the commission, was it planification that we were talking about not so long ago, to do the actual study. But it is in DPW, it is in... And it is in the council.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote.
I got a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm intrigued by what the councillor from District D is saying. I want to get more information on that. I would love to get the basis for his comments.
I can give it to you right now.
And I'd like to be able to have the police department have an opportunity to review those comments as well, because I think he makes a very compelling and very convincing point. And I just don't have the background to be able to make a decision based on what the councillor is saying versus what the police department is saying. And so I'd like to be able to get that information. So in the future, we can have a uniform approach. I think that's what he's looking for, a uniform approach to how we deal with these things. Maybe, he calls it a control, whether it's a stop sign or a yield or something, a control. So we need to have a uniform approach throughout the city. But that's not going to take place on this one item tonight, but I'm eager to learn more, is what I'm suggesting.
Definitely, yes.
Okay. I think that probably Counselor Rodriguez should request to be included in the agenda to probably have the police department and the DPW department to come in front of the City Council to talk about those issues.
Yeah, definitely, definitely will, for sure.
So do include that for the, in the agenda for the new council.
And the ordinance committee.
Yes. Okay. Okay, let's take a vote. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong call.
Yes.
Counselor LaPlante?
No.
Counselor Toomey?
No.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Lamontey?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Abdu Noted, and Counselor Vice President?
Yes.
And Counselor President?
Yes.
President?
Point of personal privilege?
Yes, go ahead.
I see some of my close friends are out here in the audience, and I wouldn't want them to miss what I'm going to say if it's going to be held up at the end of the council meeting. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to read a little something about that. That be okay?
If you give me a few seconds...
About the...
I'm sorry. If you give me a few seconds, you will have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, I have three resolutions. They were omitted from the agenda, and I would like to get a motion to take it as an emergency, and we can deal with that tonight.
So moves Counsel President.
Second.
Motion has been made to take the resolutions as an emergency. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? If there is none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Councillors, I'm going to hand my gavel to the Vice President. I have three resolutions. Counselor O'Neda Aquino and Counselor Eileen Bernard are not here tonight, and I've been... I tried before the meeting to get hold of them. I was able to get hold of Counselor O'Neda, because obviously, tonight, we were supposed to take some pictures also, which is the last meeting. But nevertheless, we'd like to take advantage of at least one person that is here, which we need to recognize. So with your permission...
Counselor Rogers, you should go over there too.
I got to read mine, too.
Yeah, it's yours.
Councillors, I would like to ask Counselor Roger Toomey to come forward. But also, I would like to ask for his wife Marilyn.
Marilyn.
That's a couple of years. Roger, for me, it's very sad to see you go. I have worked with you on so many years, or four years now, and I have really enjoyed the relationship... Now, I'm going to take my time. I have really enjoyed the relationship that we have carry on in the City Council. You have been a true friend beyond being a councillor. You have represented your district well. You have stand your ground on what you believe, even if you have been alone in the full council. And I definitely appreciate the fact that you have spent so many years of your time giving to the city. It's not easy. It requires a lot of energy. It requires a lot of your time. And greatly, as a citizen, more than anything else, I really appreciate the time that you have given us in the City Council. And I wish you many successful years ahead, in good health. And I hope that all these years that you have ahead of you, you enjoy it, and you travel with Marilyn. Obviously, Marilyn has been here with you every, on every meeting. And Marilyn, thank you. Thank you very much for being part of this, of this process, being so supportive to your husband, and always been there for him, and also for us. Because by being on his side, you have been on our side. So I really thank you. And on behalf of the City Council, I would like to read this resolution. Being known that we, the members of the Lawrence, Massachusetts City Council, by and through this resolution hereby recognize and honor Councilmember Roger Toomey for his contribution to the Lawrence community during his term as a member of the Lawrence City Council and state as follows. Whereas Counselor Toomey was elected to serve as Counselor at Large as a result of the November 2007 election, which marked the beginning of his first of four consecutive two-year terms in office from 2007 to 2015. Whereas Counselor Toomey served on several council subcommittees during these many terms of service, where he brought his ability and experience as a former Lawrence Licensing Board Commissioner and Chairman to bear to the benefit of the Personal Committee, Audits Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, and the Public Safety Committee. Whereas Counselor Toomey is best known for his ability to effectuate corrective action by legislative administrative matters concerning city personnel, city ordinances, and city charter issues, to provide the lawful application of city policy and procedures are in place and applied to municipal employees and constituents throughout the city of Lawrence. Whereas Counselor Toomey is also well-known for bringing recognition to Laurentians who have shaped our community with their achievement being brought to our attention in resolutions and proclamations of council honoring those in military service, those who provide medical care, and those who have given their lives to provide safety and security in our daily lives. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence, Massachusetts City Council, hereby honor and recognize Roger Toomey for his dedicated service on behalf of the people of Lawrence while in service as a Counselor at Large, 2007, 2015, and hereby set our hand and cast the seal of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be affixed this 15th date of December in the year 2015. Thank you, Roger. Thank you.
Speech, speech.
You know, as most of you know, this business of running for office takes an army when you think of it. And tonight, I'd like to recognize some of the people that have helped me through these eight years. So I just can't believe that 14 years have gone by so quickly. And I'm sitting here this evening, ready to say goodbye, and happy to start another chapter of my life. But my deepest personal thank you to my team, my wife Marilyn, and my family. None of this would have been accomplished without them. Chris and Debbie Toomey, my son. Leo and Debbie Lamontaine, my sister and brother-in-law. Keith Waterka, who spoke here tonight. He's a great cook, chef. Scott and Ann Clegg. Pat Riddle and Ray LaCroix. Marilyn Mercia. Linda Ravanadis. Marina Mikowski. Jean, Susan, and Mari Waterka. Luanne Bistany. Tom and Nancy Corrigan. Dennis Linus. Dennis and Louise Beland. These folks have supported me since I ran for office in 2007. And to all the neighborhood groups, I thoroughly enjoyed attending your meetings. There were 408 of them since I took office. To the department chiefs and the workers of the city of Lawrence, many thanks for responding to my calls and for all that you do for the city. You truly made me look good. Last but not least, to the residents of the city, it's been an honor and a privilege for me to have served you these 14 years. And thank you. Best wishes for a Merry Christmas and a happy and a prosperous New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillors, I think it might be appropriate to take a picture right here in the front of the council with Roger.
With all them back.
Yes, yes.
You want us all up front?
Yes, yes.
So there are tall people.
In favor, please come. Please, please, Laura, please.
Very well done. I'm glad you're ready. He's doing things cold.
Good job, son. Good job.
That's good. Okay, councilors, we were...
The president, just, in my little talk here, I neglected to mention one of the people who was very instrumental in helping me. Her name was Katie Darwin. She's a, she's a computer, she really is a computer expert, and I was very happy.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel, document 332... I'm sorry. Sorry. Document 332-15 and 333-15. I'm gonna go to the Budget and Finance Committee. And we will move along into the committee reports. And I would like to ask the chairman of the Housing Committee, Mr. Aplan, to begin with document 294-15.
Why is he here? Why is he standing there? Great, thanks.
Oh, I didn't see her.
I'm here for backup. The House, this is document number 294-15. The Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the full council a favorable recommendation to declare abandonment of a portion of, I believe it's pronounced Kalau Court, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion. Motion is to be made improperly second discussion. Yes.
I wanna ask to you, council president, I'm sorry that I wasn't here for the housing meeting, but I'm wondering, why are we abandoning? Is it, you know, is this abandoned?
Yeah. Can I pass to you some backup information?
Yes, please.
Okay. I know we've been trying to save paper.
Thank you.
Did you take it back from the... The file?
Um, we would like to abandon a portion of Kalau Court that the city does not maintain. This is 1,780 feet, um, square feet of land. If you see the package that I showed you, it shows the portion that we would like to abandon. It's a portion that it's connected to a garage that is used by an abouter. It's not maintained by the city, and the purpose to abandon it is to create a parcel that we can then sell.
So, um, this is the part where it says court?
Yes.
That's the part you want to abandon?
Yeah, if you look at the...
What does it mean when you say abandon?
To abandon is to, it's the first step that we need to do in order to then declare a surplus and then to sell the, that portion of the street.
So we no longer responsible for sanding it? Taking care of the snow, ticketing, nothing?
It will, it will become a parcel that we can then sell.
And, and this becomes property of who?
It becomes, it's still property of the city. It then goes to the different department for a real estate assessment need.
Sorry, I hate to hear who's this here.
We then do an assessment of all the department heads to see if it's a portion of the street that we need. And if it comes back as a surplus, we come back here to declare a surplus, and then we can then dispose of it.
So you're gonna come back and declare it surplus?
Yes. So the first step is to abandon it, and then to the...
How I hear you better.
And then to declare a surplus, and then to dispose of it.
I got you. So first abandon, then it becomes, um...
It becomes a parcel of land. Yes. So this is only, this is only 1,780 square feet. So it becomes a yard sale. It's a small parcel. It's only for green space and parking. When is this small?
And when you, and when we now abandon it?
What was that?
It would make the parcel bigger?
Yeah, so if we sell it to an abouter for yard, um, yard and park, and he, they can expand their property and have more green space or parking.
So we have to abandon it in order for you to be able to do?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, any other, any questions? When you were talking initially, it wasn't clear to me because of the volume of the microphone as to why we needed to abandon the property. So again, briefly, tell me again.
So we need to, it's, right now it's the street. So we need to abandon the street to then create a parcel of it, and so then we can sell it like we do with the yard sales or request repot. So this particular parcel that we're abandoning is very small. So this will be a yard sale when we get to that step.
When I look at the map, starting from Don Dyke Street, is that a street coming in, into that lot that we are abandoning?
Yeah, so as you can see on the map, it's a lot that only three property go through it. At the end of the street, only one property owner has access to that. So this is a street that the city does not maintain. We do not plow. The abutters take care of the plowing and maintaining it.
So the access to that particular lot that we are abandoning will have access to that street. Am I correct?
Yes, so the abutters that you see in the front, that portion will not be abandoned. It's just the red portion that we're trying to abandon.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, councilors? If there is none, there is a motion to floor to...
Yeah.
I just wanna make precise the, the language, just to read the sentence, just to meet some bounds. It is a parcel of land entitled Plan of Land 1-3 Kalau Court, prepared by the Cash Realty Trust dated August 25, 2014. That's the precise landing question. Let me make sure that's in the record.
Council president? Just one quick question. I see here that there's a, is this a catch basin of some sort?
Which picture are you looking? Yeah, so this is the portion that we're trying to abandon.
Right, and it could, and it would include this sewer here?
This portion is already owned by the abouter, so it's just this small little, it's a very small piece of land.
You know the last page where you have the sewer there?
Yeah.
Is it still in our, or is it gonna be part of?
It's good, once, this is part of the street right now. Once we abandon it, this is the portion that we will then try to sell.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna be part of the abandoned part?
What was that?
The catch basin is gonna be part of the abandoned?
Yes.
So do they now become responsible for?
Not yet. When they purchase it, they will.
When they purchase it, right. Whoever purchased the land...
Will be responsible for that.
They will be notified that they would have to take responsibility for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Cause I know there's up to a certain point where, you know, owners like myself and others are responsible for going up to the street, you know, pipe, whatever.
Yeah, this will become private property once we sell.
So it won't be our responsibility?
Yes, it will not be the city's responsibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilors, unless there's no other question? I would like, yes, yes, Roger.
I have a question. On this, this map, the red section is the section you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Now, what is this area leading into it? Off of Thornburg Street? This area right here leading into it?
It's a driveway.
Oh, this, so this portion is, it will still be city of Lawrence property because these two abutters used that portion of the street.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand you.
The portion that we're abandoning is just the red portion. So this will still be Kalau Court, and it will be used by just these two property owners. But this still will be public street. The portion that's not in red.
That's Kalau Court. That's the court. That's the street Kalau Court.
This is Kalau Court.
That's the right.
So that's, that's Kalau Court. And so we want to break it here.
These people wanna buy it?
Yeah, this guy right here. Eventually, declare surplus, then it goes out.
So the coil, the coil will stay there. Okay, I got it.
Yours, sir, Roger?
Yours, sir, thank you.
Okay. Let's take a vote.
Counsel, president, I think the gentleman might have wanted to...
This is the abouter. He can, um...
He can clarify probably any questions that anybody has. He is the abouter buying the rest of the property.
Well, I think eventually when...
Eventually he'll come in for the disposition.
If the property is put for sale, he would have the chance to, okay?
Too big for it, and...
Yes.
I thought they could have been clarifications to their question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we all set? Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Cannon.
So the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to this council a favorable recommendation, document number 295-15, which would declare a portion of Chickering Street as an abandoned property. And that portion...
Second.
Is what's encapsulated in this memo. It's a pretty long, uh, long description.
Yes.
To be done in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made improperly second discussion.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
So, what we're trying to abandon here is the section that is on lot X. Correct?
Yes.
All right. So everybody is aware what is lot X, right here on the map, on the blueprint? So if we see the building, the existing building is using the property before they even buy it, before it is declared a surplus. That was a big concern that I have at the Housing Committee. I just wanna express it to you guys. Even though I, I voted in favor of it to abandon it, it's always a concern. And if it is a concern, I would like to express it to you guys. They used that parcel for about 30 years since the building was built. Now they wanna acquire the property. It's about 9,000, about 6,900 square footage. I was trying to go around, uh, to go, to, to see if we can address the issue a little deeply because, because of the fact that they already been using the property for 30 years. And, uh, and the assessment on the property, maybe it was not considering that portion of the property because it was not, they didn't own it before. It was, it was something that I, that I definitely would like to look into it and, and see from the city perspective what we can do about it. Even though I, like I said, I approve the abandon of the section, which is about 7,000 square footage, I really, I really concerned about, about the whole section and, uh, and being abandoned now that they might need it and not before and pay taxes when, when we were needed. Not now. I would like to, you guys, to be aware of what's going on on the property. At the city, at the Housing Committee, we discussed it. We discussed it very deeply. I asked many questions to her, many questions to the people that want to acquire the property, to the attorney. I just want everybody to be aware of what is the situation there. And, and eventually, once we declare a surplus, what we're gonna do with it. That's my, my comment.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Do you wanna speak? Just, um, I wanna share, council president, that there are a lot of properties throughout the city that people have taken it upon themselves to use. You know, I've been complaining about that for many years now. So I don't know what we're supposed to be do about this particular family that's been using it for 30 years.
No, this is a business.
Oh, it's a business?
It's a huge business that is gonna, uh, that, that is, it's, it's making money out of it. It's not a family that is using for parking, or it's not a family that is using for a green space. It's a business that is making money out of that spot.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Rodriguez. And I know, you know, you're new to this, but most of the time, you need to ask the president if you can enter.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is just a clarification.
All right. But as I was saying, this is a problem throughout the city.
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to do with this two situation. We're finding situation like this where we can sell this type of property to people who might not have known that this was the street, particularly this property. This was something that was not here. It was a street when it was just Andover. And then the train tracks were built, and the city never eliminated that portion of the street. So these people might have not known that this was city property. And when they tried, did a title search, a cloud of title came. So they came to us, and we're here to accomplish the sale, to, um, to put it back in the tax rolls. Right now, we're not making any money out of it.
So the business brought it to your attention?
Yes.
Okay. But again, you know, how we deal with this, I guess, making a difference whether, you know, it's business or families or whatever. But however we deal with this, it's, um, it's gonna set, you know, the way that we're gonna deal with situations like this from here on.
Yes.
That's all, you know, I wanted to make sure that we know that this is not the only situation.
And absolutely, if we see more situations like this, we'll come back and, and try to put it back in the tax rolls and make, you know, make the city whole.
Cause that, that, you know, near, um, in District C, I don't know if it continues to be District C, but it's down where June Black lives, you know. The street before it, trying to remember the name. There is a family who's taking over a property where you can actually develop even a two-family house. That's how much space there is there.
If you ever see a property like that, I would definitely appreciate if you give me a call, and we'll definitely look into it.
Why don't we take a drive, and I'll show you exactly?
Yeah, that'd be great.
There it is.
Thanks.
When I look at the plan, there's an existing building that is standing on that property.
Yes.
Is that building part of the other, of the same company that owns the other two buildings?
Yes.
When that building was built, was the city aware that that was a street?
I'm not sure. I wasn't even born when that building was built.
Because obviously, a permit was issued to build that building, so but...
Yes. And that's why we're here to try to, you know, make, abandon it, declare a surplus, and then put it back in the tax rolls.
Are there any other questions?
I mean...
If there's none, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Continue.
So document 3, number 308, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to declare the parcel 55 Bromfield Street, Tax Map 171, Law 32, a surplus. Take that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to declare surplus property 55 Bromfield Street. It has been properly second. Are there any discussion?
No, other than, if there's no, if, all of the other ones are gonna be the same, and if they're, if it's the same recommendation, we might wanna try to take it as a block after you're done with it. If, if it has the same recommendation, I don't know.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm gonna continue to read it, just because people may wanna know...
Oh, you could still read though.
Wanna know that there's these districts in their districts. And their constituents may wanna know as well. But I'll do it real fast. We can get through this real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue with document 309-15.
Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to declare Tax Map 183-23, 11-13, a surplus. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Unless there's any discussion, I would like to call for a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue.
Uh, document three ten fifteen, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the full council with favorable recommendation, tax map one ninety, lot eighty, nine dash eleven Florence Street, to declare a surplus. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare nine dash eleven Florence Street as a surplus property. Unless there is no discussion, I would like to call for a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Continue.
Document three eleven fifteen, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to declare document, uh, to declare document three eleven fifteen as a surplus. That's tax map forty-four, lot fifty-five, otherwise known as one forty-one Hancock Street. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare one forty-one Hancock Street as surplus property. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
Uh, document number three twelve fifteen, the Housing Committee voted unanimously to send to the full council with favorable recommendation, tax map one seventy-one, lot one forty-one, known as seventy-one seventy-three Spruce Street, and declare it a surplus. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare seventy-one seventy-three Spruce Street as a surplus property. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, continue.
Uh, this is document number three fifteen fifteen, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the full council with favorable recommendation, uh, to make this part of a parkland acquisitions and renovations for community's program of park. This is a resolution for Gaggen Park and Burgoyne Park Playgrounds. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is that second? Uh, are there any discussion? If there's none, or in favor...
Yeah, um, can I get a little bit of some background on this?
Sure, I have Ms. Fink here from the Community Development Office, so I think I'll be able to more aptly respond, but let me take one stab at it before she gets here, which is essentially to, uh, to begin the application process for grants, and they need to, to take these two parks and highlight them as the parks that we're gonna be applying for parkland grants. Am I right on that?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the city, um, filed an application in July to renovate the playgrounds at both Gaggen and Burgoyne Parks. So it's just the, the playground itself, so new play equipment, safety surfacing, trash receptacles, benches. And, um, we're hoping to perhaps here by the end of this week, whether we've received this grant or not.
So this is the one that, um, you came before us earlier in the year?
No.
Okay, 'cause you also came to talk about a park earlier in the year.
I'm here quite often to talk about parks.
Okay, so our, our vote today would be...
Is to allow us to apply and accept this grant.
Okay.
And if we are so lucky to be awarded this grant, I will have to come back for the authorization to expend those grant funds.
Okay. So at that, that time, it will go to BNF? All right.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Councilor, let's take a vote on document three fifteen fif- uh, fifteen. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Chairman of the Board of Finance Committee, document three twenty-three fifteen.
Uh, three twenty-six fifteen.
Three twenty-six fifteen, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document three twenty-six fifteen is the Lawrence Fire Department Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, which is a safer grant on the amount of one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. It came with a favorable recommendation from the subcommittee, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve document three twenty-six fifteen.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant, uh, before anything, I'd like to thank, uh, the chief for being here tonight. It is also important to highlight that this application, I went through every single page of it, and it's very detailed as to specifically what the grant will do. It has provided us with a lot of valuable information from the fire department and all of the hard work that they're doing on a daily basis. This is specifically to hire seven new firefighters, um, starting the second half of the, of this current fiscal year, meaning in January, and it will run into fiscal year two thousand eighteen, the first half of fiscal year two thousand eighteen. So we have a, a grant that will be specifically impacting positively the city of Florence for the next three fiscal years, half of two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen seventeen completely, and half of two thousand eighteen. So once again, our fire department will be able to accomplish a lot of great things. It is also, uh, when I look at the application on page A, um, it, it details the, the call volume for the, uh, the fire department, and it is important to highlight, uh, the great work that they have done, or, and that, and how the community is also becoming more proactive to prevent fires in the city of Florence. In two thousand twelve, we had one thousand six hundred and eighty-five good intent calls, or what is also considered as a false alarm. That number has jumped by almost five hundred to fiscal year two thousand fourteen, which means that we are being more proactive as a community in assisting the fire department to ensure that, that we prevent fires, uh, in the city. And I know that this addition of seven new firefighters, uh, will be great. So thank you to the administration of Mayor Rivera. Thank you, Chief Moriari, as well as, um, Lieutenant Maccaron for putting this whole application together.
Yeah, Council President?
Yes.
I just have a question. I'm wondering, is, um, Chief Moriari, is this what's allowing us to, like, reopen the engine A?
No.
No.
Maybe others?
No, it is not. It has nothing to do with engine eight. Engine eight, it is not...
This doesn't help?
No, what this will help us do is try to keep our overtime down, keep our staffing adequate on the trucks that we have currently.
Uh-huh. And, okay, so we succeeded how in opening? 'Cause I know that's been a concern for a long time for people, to open it.
We opened engine nine, Bailey Street, not engine eight. We opened engine nine, Bailey Street.
Is that was it eight or nine?
Nine.
Nine? Okay, nine.
Nine, and, and I simply redeployed the crews that we had. We fixed the station up, got it, got it in livable condition again, beautiful building that it is. DPW Counselor is right, did an excellent job. And I redeployed our sources, uh, resources that we already had. It was a budget-neutral, um, action. It didn't change our staffing at all.
And we were able to reopen it?
Correct.
That's great. Without additional funding. That's good, thank you. Also...
Uh, Chief, uh, how many staff will be hired?
I'm sorry?
For this grant? How many staffs will be hired?
This grant will hire seven, seven firefighters.
Okay. This is gonna be a two-year, two-and-a-half-year grant?
Two-year grant.
It's a two-year, a calendar year is a two-year, but it's, it runs over a three-year, three fiscal year period.
Okay, okay. Does the city, by accepting this grant, will have the obligation to hire these people that, that are gonna be put in place?
At a what?
Does this grant...
Right, hire these people at a what, the last thing you said?
No, my, my question is, does this grant, uh, force the city to hire these people permanently after the grant is over?
Well, what'll happen is if we can't afford to keep the people, um, the number at one twenty-four, the last hired will be the ones that lose their jobs. Usually, it's done by attrition, but the, the hope is that in the next two years, the city will bounce back and be able to reap a benefit out of this, maybe lowering the overtime and saving money other place that we'll be able to keep the firefighters, is the intent and the hope.
Okay, because I'm concerned that as we place, and I, I think it's great that we have the money to hire these people, at least on a temporary basis, but it's always my concern that, uh, with all these people, if we're gonna include them in the, uh, in the regular budget, it's going to require a substantial increase in the budget.
Yeah, this doesn't hold you past the two years.
And a lot more taxes.
This doesn't hold you past the two years.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Through you, Mr. President. It's also important, that, that was a great question. It is also important to highlight, uh, that there is no matching funds from the city of Florence to accept this grant. So, uh, the amount that we will be receiving is, it's completely free of any matching funds.
Can I, just one more question when he's done. Chief Moriari, do you already have the people on either a civil service list or something?
The process has begun. They've already gone through almost all of their exams. We have one firefighter going to take what's called a PAT. He's scheduled on the seventeenth for the practice and the twenty-second for the, um, permanent one, and then we do have the names all set to, to go. They've already been through the process. We will be able to start, uh, right, right in the beginning of January. We'll put them through some basic training, and then I've already acquired slots for six of them to attend the academy beginning in February, so we'll get them trained right away.
So was that a continuing, um, list, or is, was this a whole new list?
It's, it's the list that currently still...
Of people that took the exam?
Right, it's the list that currently still exists.
That currently still exists?
Active list, yep.
Okay, so it's, it's been around for...
Almost two years.
Almost two years.
But when you have openings and you want to hire, you, you apply to civil service for more names, and they send you those names. They pick the names that they send to us.
Who picks the names?
Civil service, they're on that list.
They're on that list? Okay, so like if other, in other places, they've been laid off, they don't get transferred here?
There, there weren't any. That, that would've come first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, unless there was any other question, I'm gonna call for a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue with document three twenty-seven fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document three twenty-seven fifteen is the Lawrence Fire Department Emergency Performance, uh, EMP grant on the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. It was also placed on the agenda by, uh, Chief Brian Moriari. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document three twenty-seven fifteen. It has been properly second. Discussion?
Sure. Discussion, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, similar to the previous grant, the, uh, the application process in this one was also very detailed, uh, as to, been specific in, in, in reference to what the money will be utilized for. I am happy to see that, um, uh, it will, it's gonna, it's not gonna be specific to one particular station, but it's gonna be throughout, uh, the city, that it will have a, a positive impact. There are three specific projects that are, that have been highlighted. One of them is the purchase of seven GPS devices, as well as, uh, purchase of generators for engine seven and engine nine, uh, so District C and District F. Thank you very much, Chief. Very much needed, uh, as well as, you know, the purchase of workstations throughout the different stations.
Quick, quick discussion. So I don't want this to go past us before we realize what we're just doing here. We just thought it on one grant, now a second grant. I want to call this attention. We are bringing seven new firefighters in the city of Florence. That's pretty big. Plus, we're bringing in some capital improvement to make sure their jobs are gonna be more efficient, more effective, and who benefits from it? We all do, the citizens. So I want to raise my voice a little bit because this is huge news. We're bringing new firefighters in the city of Florence. Other communities may or may not be getting them, may be stagnant, but we're bringing them on board because we lost a lot a few years ago, and we're bringing some back. So kudos to you, Chief, through you, kudos to the mayor, to the, to the folks who are part of the, the grant process. This is huge news. I just wanna, I want to amplify, hold on, speaking loud enough, I want to amplify the fact that this is significant and that we're getting this. Thank you. Thank you. Lieutenant Maccaron deserves a lot of credit.
Got it.
If there is no other comments?
I do...
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, uh, congratulations, Chief, uh, on putting this application together the way you did. Great, great, great job, um, your staff. I'm very happy and pleased to know that we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna acquire that money, and we're gonna be receiving those grants, uh, for the safety of the city of Florence and for the, for, for our people. I hope that one day, uh, if there is so many firefighters, that we can have some on M Street, that we need some over there. My neighbor need to, uh, that, um, that engine to be reopened, and somehow, we need to figure something out. And I would like you, uh, together with your staff, uh, to work and to think about the possibility of open, um, the engine that is so needed on my area. And I, and I hope, uh, that we, I understand that it's some, some issues, some concern down there, uh, but, uh, innovation is there. I think that we shouldn't think, we shouldn't take different out of the box and see if we can, if we can come up with something different. Thank you so much for, for your service, and thank you so much for doing what you're doing, and, uh, and, uh, the city of Florence is gonna appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Um, Council President, and to you, Chief, with, um... We recognize that a lot of work has been put into gaining these grants, um, and I was happy that when, before, when you came to the council earlier this year, you spoke about applying for various grants. And I think it's wonderful, but I also think it's important to be cautious, um, that these new firemen are here for two years.
Mm-hmm.
And that that needs to be understood, um, because unless we manage to raise more money or to expand our tax base, to bring more businesses here, um, it's gonna be difficult to maintain them after the two years.
I agree.
You know, so, and, you know, I love the work that you've been doing with, I've told you that before, you know, and I've said that it's great. The lieutenant as well has been working hand in hand with you, and I think it's wonderful the work that you guys are doing. And I also think it's wonderful that you managed to open, you know, to reopen engine nine, if I was saying eight, 'cause the acoustics and stuff, I think my hearing is going. I'll blame the acoustics. And, um, I think it's wonderful that you managed to do that with the, um, amount of dollars that, that were appropriated, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, is there any que- anymore, any more questions? If there is none, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, continue with document three twenty-eight fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document two twenty-eight fifteen is the acceptance of Community Health Initiative Funds on the amount of four hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars, and it was placed on the agenda by Mr. Barnes from Community Development, uh, Department. And I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document three twenty-eight fifteen, and it has been properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes. Go ahead.
Just a quick question, um... To Counselor Vasquez, through you, Council President. Is this the same one that we were, is this the same initiative that we discussed with, I don't have it in front of me, but that we discussed along with, um, the presentation that was given last council meeting? Is this part of it?
No, I do not think so. What this is, is, it's, um, it's Lawrence General Hospital, uh, has had certain capital improvement projects, and as a result of that, uh, the city of Florence has been awarded, you know, certain grants and, or sorts of fundings, and that actually has increased on the amount of four hundred, on the amount, uh, four hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars, which will allow us to have an increment of ninety-six thousand dollars annually. So last year, we approved something similar, uh, so this is just an increase to what was previously approved.
Okay.
Ms. Fink, does that answer it properly? Okay, good.
Let us see here. No, I think it's great that, um, that you identify for us what exactly this initiative is.
Definitely.
Okay, and, you know, for the people watching it all. I, I always think it's important to be able to spell out and describe what it is that we're talking about.
Oh, definitely. So this funds, they go specifically, um, to the Community Development Department through Department through the Mayor's Health Task Force for, uh, a variety of health initiatives that are going on in the city currently. Uh, so they, they go to, you know, fund those projects that, that are happening through the Mayor's Health Task-
Which may or may not be part of the, the whole, um, initiative, Smart Street Initiative.
Yeah, Smart Street is completely separate from, from this item here.
Right.
Yeah, something, it, it, there are two completely separate projects.
Mm-hmm. But that's, this is a good piece too, so, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? If there is none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, Counselor's document fifty-fifteen, I believe that this needs to be referred to the Housing Committee. Am I correct? So I'm going to refer this document, uh, fifty-fifteen to the Housing Committee. Uh, in the table matters, I would like to enter the motion to take document ninety-two fifteen out of table matters.
So moved, second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, you receive a copy of the document, uh, by Counselor, uh, Armonte. Uh, Counselor Armonte, will you please, uh?
Thank you. Um, through you, Council President. Um, last meeting, I gave out this information, which is regarding the TIFs of our city. Um, there are lots of, um, situations that are happening, kinda like what's happening with, um, Polartec at the moment, that if maybe we would have had some of these clauses in there, they would not have been able to leave the city as easily without any repercussions for their actions, including, um, leaving so many people unemployed, moving their factory, et cetera. Um, the Tax Intensive Forgiveness Program allows companies to come into our city and not pay taxes because we're letting them come into our city, and what they're doing also is offering jobs, um, and other good things that are for our city. Um, but there are no clauses in their contract that says that if they don't comply with the money that we are allowing them to not pay, um, that they would have to give us that money back. Or if they don't comply with any of the regulations under their commitment of the contract, then we'll be able to, then we would be able to retract and, um, basically, um, uh, go after them for whatever the agreement was that they are not agreeing with. Um, during, uh, our meeting, uh, at the full council of June, of, uh, June second, we had, um, I believe it was Counselor, um, LePlante that had asked if we could, um, send a letter to Abel Vargas, um, do other communities have this collateral agreement, if this is in full compliance by DOR, and to provide information by June second. Then information never came down. After that, we went on vacation and ev, elections and everything else that has happened. I would like to make a motion at this time that this information, or this same, um, motion that was sent, um, to Mr. Vargas be resent to him, one. Two, um, that, um, uh, Mr. Iannello, send us information as to who are the open agreements that we have for TIF at the moment? How long have they been TIF'd? How much have we TIF'd them? And, um, and what else did I have in here? Uh, to do, oh, and taxes. I was doing a little bit of discovery and I saw that some of these companies that we TIF are not paying their taxes on top of not paying, um, we're TIF'ing them on, on certain, uh, reliefs, and they're not paying other things that they need to pay. That comes out of the, the debt ceiling tax, that's, that's where the bracket comes in, and that's where the homeowners', uh, taxes go up, and I think it's unfair. This is something that I had been, um, fighting since back in June, and now with the closing of Polartec, or the intent closing of Polartec, or what's happening at the moment, it's, it's greatly affecting our city. I think that we need to take a stand against this. Um, I need to, we need to let them know that if they're gonna come into our city and reap our benefits, that if they don't do what's under their conditions of their contract and agreement, that we're able to take the benefits that they are reaping from us back. Um, during my discovery, I've, I've seen companies that have, um, been reaping this benefit for a very long time, and I think that the, the citizens of the City of Lawrence need to know this. Where they, there's a lot of complaints because they don't understand how it is that the taxes go up. The taxes go up because the state tells us, this is how much you need to pay us back. But if we don't, if we're allowing these companies to come in and not pay taxes, what ends up, not the complete taxes, because I know that you're gonna say, but they are being TIF'd. And if we allow them not to pay for that, then the residents of the City of Lawrence have to pay for that because we need to come to our debt ceiling. So if that money's not coming in from somewhere, it's coming out of our homeowners and our, and our, and the, and the small business owners that do pay their taxes, that don't get TIF'd, that don't have that opportunity of, um, having such a great company or a huge company that is gonna provide, uh, you know, a hundred jobs or whatever it is, they don't have that opportunity to get TIF'd. And they're the ones paying and picking up the foot bill, and so aren't the residents of the City of Lawrence. They own homes and they pay their taxes for this reason. So, um, what I wanted to do is that I wanted to make this a motion, um, refer a letter to read, please send correspondence to Abel Vargas verifying, um, if there are any other communities that, um, use this collateral agreement. There is, Newton uses this. They use this collateral agreement. I, I did my research with them and, and I've been in Newton, and if you can see the, the wonderful things that they're able to do, like, um, the recycle compactors that they have outside and a bunch of stuff, it, all of these things are, um, like grants that could come into the city and it's free. But, um, correspondence for, uh, for Mr. Vargas, um, is this fully in compliance by DOR? This is an answer that we need by him, and, um, provide the information, uh, to be provided to us by our next full council meeting, so that we're able to take some type of action, um, on this document. And then after that, obviously, we would need to do a home petition and have that, um, allowed if we can in that, in that sense. Um, and I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
So there's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded.
And for, I'm sorry, and for Mr. Iannello to send the information that I needed, as into how many, how long, how much has been, um, pardon.
So it's written here, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion had been made and properly seconded to request information, uh, from Abel Vargas. Are there any discussions?
And Mr. Iannello.
Discussion, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that it is, through you, Mr. President, it is important that, um, certain clarifications are made specifically as to what a TIF is and how it properly works in the city. It is not that we're not requiring, um, businesses to pay taxes in Lawrence, but rather, it is a public financing tool that is provided to any businesses that are incoming into the city for purposes of redevelopment, um, of infrastructure. We are encouraging and promoting our city, uh, you know, and bringing businesses in, new businesses in. So when we mention a company that unfortunately, uh, you know, due to the fact that they have found opportunities in another state, which I hope we could find ways to keep those jobs in the City of Lawrence, uh, and I'm gonna do everything possible. I had a conversation with someone, uh, about it today in, in, in length. Um, but we cannot say that it was because of a TIF or lack of that, that company, it's not-
Point of clarification, if I may, this was back in June that I put this forward, not now, and this with Polartec is happening now. So it's not the reason that you're saying. And the clarification as into this is, there is a debt ceiling that needs to be reached, and when these companies walk out on the City of Lawrence and walk out on the contract, we're the ones who are hindered.
Point of clarification taken.
I understand where the, I understand where the-
Point of clarification taken, Mr. President.
I understand where the money's coming from.
Never finish because-
The point of clarification was already made.
Mm-hmm.
So I have the floor.
But I asked for a point of clarification, so I still have the floor until I stop speaking. Thank you.
Let's not get into an argument about it.
So, and I'm not. I mean, if, if you wanna be so, so nailing it, well, there you go, indulge. But like I was saying, this is, this is basically so that we can send able information that, that we need to be able to make the correct decision. And when they don't comply with the contract, the, this is just simply so that when they don't comply with the contract, we are able to say, you didn't comply, and this is what's gonna happen. There is no clause in there for that. And this that I put forward was way before Polartec, because there are other issues that are in hand that, like right now, I don't wanna put these people out there. But I want able, the people who, who are up there, that that's their job to do, to make that clarification so that we can better decide what is best for our city. This was put forward way before Polartec decided they wanted to go anywhere.
Okay, continue.
Completely, yeah, I agree with you. So I don't understand why the name Polartec has to be brought up to the table at the discussion.
Because, because of what's happening now.
Mr. President, I have the floor at this moment.
Let's not get into, again, let's not get into a discussion back and forth. Uh, continue, uh, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I was saying, it is a public financing method that it is used to bring redevelopment in the city, to attract businesses, to promote employment in the City of Lawrence. Uh, it is not saying you are not going to pay your taxes in here. What we are doing is having an increment over time, primarily AA TIF is provided to companies for a ten, a ten-year period. So there's a percentage bracket that will be changing over time based on what has been approved. It has been alluded to that there is no payment during that process. That is definitely not correct. Uh, the idea is to improve our neighborhoods, redevelop certain areas that, um, probably wouldn't have obtained businesses. And, and as a result of that, we are helping our tax base and growing our tax base over the future, looking forward. And do I think that the Counselor from District A has a good point? Of course, I do think she has a, a valid point here. It is, is it something that we need to, um, be sensitive and very cautious about? Of course, because we have companies and we want to ensure the new companies come in Lawrence, and we cannot be closing the doors to them. It is important that we maintain the doors of the City of Lawrence open for business, and we have to be very cautious as to how we approach it. Um, we want to be business friendly to ensure that our city succeeds. If we are not business friendly, there's no way Lawrence can succeed. We do not have a strong tax base. And last time, if we, if we remember, uh, Counselor from District A proposed a one-point-seven-five factor, which will have taxed the businesses to the, uh, to the highest. So I think it's a big contradiction saying, let's tax businesses to the highest possible, and then we're saying, wait, Polartec, don't not, don't leave the city. We want you here. I think that's a contradiction when you're saying, I'm gonna tax you the highest we possibly can, but do not leave us. So I think that if we're gonna send a message, the message has to be concise. We want to work with businesses in Lawrence. We want businesses here. We want to protect our residents, so we have to find common ground. And that is not what I saw previously. Uh, and I think that the conversation, it sounds very good when you say one thing, but the votes and the, and the motions that you make are not necessarily in line with what you're proposing tonight. So I think let, let, let's look at it closely and see. If we're gonna support businesses, let, let's look at it from a holistic perspective. Let's not just say, let's increase your taxes to the levy, you know, let's go to the one-point-seven-five factor, and then let's pretend that we truly care.
Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, just other people.
I haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Okay, let me, uh-
Well, I just wanted to answer what he, from what he said. So this-
Hold on, hold on. Let me give the opportunity to other people so that you can, okay?
Okay.
I wanna go after-
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing. The, the Counselor who's proposing this has called it a tax increment forgiveness. I just wanna make the record straight. That's, it's the tax increment financing. It's, it's an economic development tool. It's a tool that many communities use to try to enhance and try to attract businesses to come to their community. And it's nothing more than a tool. Not everybody gets it, and we haven't really given many of these, we haven't really supported many of these over the last few years. They're, I think they're dwindling, quite frankly. Um, and I just had a question for the, for the Counselor who's proposing this, if it's, if that's all right, through you, Mr. President. The document that's here that came before a public hearing on June?
Yes.
Um, was this drafted originally, or was this from a different community that's already implemented?
This, this is drafted from, and thank you, Council President, through you. This is drafted more through, um, other agreements that have been done through other cities. During our meeting at full council, um, you had asked me if I had, um, seen any other communities that do this, and I gave you Newton, which was one of the communities that we had looked at, Charlie Body and I to, to put this together. I am by no way trying to say that we're not gonna host, um, companies to come in to, um, indulge in what we have to offer them. This is basically amending it, excuse me, this is to answer the question that Counsel Vasquez had, uh, to amend-
I thought I had the, I just had a question. I just wanted to see if she opted it or wish she had.
But I, I wanted to-
Why don't you, why don't you hold on to the, uh?
But it's just to add-
Okay, why don't you hold on to the comment?
This to the contract, so that we do not, so that we do not, it's just a clause that says, if you do not comply with your contract, this is going to happen. It is not saying that we don't wanna TIF anybody, and this is not called, I didn't name it-
Counselor, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's stick to the issue. I'm gonna give you a chance to respond to Counselor Vasquez, so keep that separate, and please stick to the question.
Okay. So there was something said that I called it a, um, a tax increment financing. This is what was set forward by Charles Body. I called it a host agreement. Charlie Body, this is Charlie Body's, um, wording. I didn't, I didn't put any of these words in here. This is his final draft as into what the host agreement was for the other community. TIF is what it's under for the City of Lawrence. That's how we understand it. So I called it a host agreement, and he called it the Tax Intensive Forgiveness Agreement. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I just wanted, so, so it was originated here, I, I, there was a conflicting information. I think the Counselor was originally saying that, that, that there were other communities that had this, and she brought this together, and then she's saying that Counsel, that City Attorney Body put this together, but I-
Put the wording together.
This came, this came to the, uh, uh, ordinance committee. It was discussed at the ordinance committee, then it was, uh, it was sent without a recommendation to a public hearing, and I believe that we did conduct a public hearing.
On June, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, this document, uh, was not approved yet. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this document still, uh, in ob, on, on the table matters, then it, that needs to be approved.
So I guess one, I guess maybe my last question is, does the, does the sponsor remember a community that, that has adopted this particular?
I've said it four times, Newton is, is one of the ones that we-
I couldn't have seen you, I'm sorry.
Newton, Mass. They're one of the host commu, they're one of the, they're one of the communities who have implemented some of the wording that is, that is in here. This was drawn up by our city attorney. See, because I can't put something together as a Counselor. It needs to be drawn up through our city attorney, therefore the document in hand. So he draw, he drew this up. I called it a host agreement. He put the wording in there that he felt would comply and help us, so that if somebody walks out on the City of Lawrence, that we're able to say, you, you can't do that. They, they don't, they're on a tax ba, they don't pay for the beginning of their, um, their alleviation of, of taxes, and they start to as their ten years go up, go about. But what if they leave within five years? How are we gonna recoup our money? What if they leave in two years? See, that's my point. I'm not trying to take this any further. My thing is trying to protect the citizens of, you know, us. Because if, if we don't protect us, that was the one little loop thing that I did not see in there. We, it's wonderful to entice other companies to come into the City of Lawrence. We need that. But what if they leave in two years or three years? We have no way of recouping the money that we allowed them to be excused from until the end of their contract. That is the reason why I decided to do discovery and ask for Charlie Body's, um, you know, help, so that that doesn't happen to our city. It's just a protection.
All set.
You're all set.
And my answer, my question was answered really quick.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I second the motion because I do believe that it's important to have this discussion at the council, and it would be a more fruitful discussion if we had some of these documents that we asked for. And I know that some people believe that we shouldn't, um, mention Polartec, but Polartec, um, did in fact get certain assistance from the city, um, and we did so with the, um, hope that they would stay here for a very long time.
Mm-hmm.
So, and I've seen that there have been other, um, businesses who've gotten TIFs that have not, um, remained here for as long as we would like them to. And given that, I believe that it is important to have some type of sanction. I mean, if we ourselves don't give worth and value to our own city, say this, this city's valuable, you know, um, and I think we're saying it's not when, when we just allow these things to go on and on and on and on, um, for decades. So it's, it is my belief that Counsel Armonte has brought forward a, an important discussion. And if, I, I would like to see more businesses come, and we can try to be business friendly, but also we need to remember that there has to be some way of protecting our citizens from when these things- when these things don't work out. And, I mean, oftentimes, we think it's going to work out, and most people will sign it because they believe that it's going to work out. So if they are afraid to sign it because it says if you're unable to pay, to comply with the points made in the contract, then that would be the only reason why they wouldn't sign. And the other thing is, we've been, we've been very, very casual too about the number of employees that should be Laurentians. And it is my understanding that it's not against the law for us to require X amount of employees B from Lawrence. And I know they've tried to make that, that be something that we believe in the past, like, well, you know, I don't really have to agree to it. Well, there is law that protects us, and hopefully, we're going to have all of that information in front of us, and information about, God bless you. So we have had a lot of different things happen throughout the years, with TIFs, with no TIFs, and I understood what she meant by the, when people have TIFs and they're still paying a certain amount of taxes, although there's another amount that's being discounted because that's the agreement. But she's saying they're not even paying the amount they agreed to pay, that there are some businesses who have failed to do that. I want to see all of this information come before us with specific names, you know, and not just talking about it, but having specific information about those, who those businesses are, and continue to guarantee those people that are compliant, you know, continue to guarantee them future businesses here. But if people are not meeting the contract, then they shouldn't be and are not willing to take the risk to say, yes, I will repay X amount if we're unable to meet this for the five years or 10 years, whatever it is. I think she's right, and we should move forward with that discussion.
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
There's no question in my mind that the TIF program is a very good program that is going to help bring businesses into our city. But when this contract is signed, there is a commitment on the part of the company and a commitment on the part of the city. We provide them with an incentive, a tax incentive, and in return, we, the company is supposed to hire a specific number of employees moving to the city, make improvements on the property, make some investment. And obviously, without this paperwork, without this contract to be included in the TIF program, we have no way of enforcing that particular contract. And I have to agree that we need to do that in order to make sure that this company's come in, benefit from the TIF program, but at the same time, we, the city, need to make sure, we need to make certain that this company complied with the requirements of the contract. And obviously, it makes it worse when we provide incentives to this company when they don't pay the little taxes that we allow them to pay, they're not paying it. So I don't know how many of them are doing that, but obviously, the information that you're requesting will provide us with that information. But it is important to us so that these companies will not come into our city to take advantage of us, take advantage of the tax incentive, and then leave whenever they feel like it without complying, okay? And without giving us back what we are looking for. We are giving them an incentive, but we want something back, okay? So it is important that we follow through with this and that we get the information that is being requested. Yes, yes, Roger.
Do we know how many companies have done this?
We have, I don't have, I don't have any idea, no.
Point of information, Mr. President. Through personal knowledge and based on conversations I had with individuals at the administration, we had one TIF that was unable to comply and had to leave the city. If you guys remember, that was Pollo Campero, which is at the intersection of Lowell and Franklin Street.
And Franklin, yeah.
So Pollo Campero, the city provided them with a 10-year TIF, and they weren't, not able to comply. Another, another point of information that I would like to provide is that I also had communication with Mr. Vargas approximately two or three weeks ago, I cannot recall the date, in reference to a list of delinquent taxpayers that goes back to the 80s. If we recall, there was a $22 million that I owe to the City of Lawrence of tax payment. And for this fiscal year, we approved $50,000 to hire consultant, outside consultants to try to recuperate that money. So that process has started very smooth, and we have actually started recuperating some of those funds. The list has shrunk. Mr. Vargas will actually be, will be providing us that list, maybe within, you know, sometime early next fiscal, next year, not fiscal year, the next calendar year, in 2016. I did talk to him maybe two or three weeks ago about it.
Okay, are you all set with your, okay?
Yeah, point of order?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor President, I know this is our last meeting, but I wanted to be known that I think it's really disrespectful when members of our own body find it funny that people in the audience may be disrespectful to the councillors. And I think that should be a stop. There should be a stop put to that. And it really annoys me particularly when there are people, when this is coming from people who want to be leaders of this body. Thank you, Councillor President.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to request from Abel Vargas information that was requested way back and has not been provided. Motion has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote.
Mr. President, one last thing. I want to make it clear, I am not necessarily against what Councillor Almonte is requesting. I just had to explain what the TIF was. And I'll suggest through the proponing of the motion, in addition to Mr. Vargas, I believe Mr. Alexi Vega will be a much better fit to also be part of the conversation, because he works directly as well in that department. So I don't know if the...
Would you like to include Alexi Vargas as a...
Alexi Vega.
...of your motion?
All three of them, then it would be Mr. Ryanello, Abel Vargas, and Alexi. But the information that I need, Mr. Vargas should be able to give me most of that information, because he is the person that is in charge of that. Mr. Vargas would probably, I mean, Alexi Vega would probably clarify what he would not be able to.
Okay.
But Abel is the person that should be able to have most of this information for us.
So you agree to include Alexi as part of this conversation?
Thank you.
Great. Okay, let's take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, are there any other old business that needs to be taken?
Mr. President, motion to table document 9215.
Thank you.
Motion has been made to table document 32215. It has been properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
And just Councillor President, I want to apologize for my harshness.
No, that's okay.
Because it's been hard for me to speak.
Councillors, I would like to take a motion to take document 32215 out of table matters.
322...
That is in committee?
It's in committee.
No, no, it's in the committee as a whole. Yes. We're simply going to pull it off to make, and I will explain the reason. Again, simply put this document up to the full council, is already, is already in the committee as a whole.
In committee as a whole.
But it's just a procedural matter that I need to discuss.
A procedural matter?
Yes.
Okay.
Which document?
I need a motion to take...
I make the motion.
Second?
Document 32215.
What is it, document?
It's a stipend.
322...
Motion, who's making the motion?
I am.
Second?
And it has been properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's in the committee in the hall right now?
Yes, it is.
So we're bringing this up to discuss it here? I thought we were meeting on Thursday.
Just for a procedural matter. We need to make, we need...
Procedural matters.
Let me explain. I might as well. The administration and members of the administration that we have requested to be present in the committee as a whole are not responding. They are taking advantage that, they are saying that unless they are requested by the full council to...
They were requested by the full council.
Huh?
They were requested by the full council.
No, it was requested by the committee as a whole. Okay, so, so they are holding on to that as a delay tactic, to come in front of the full, in front of the committee as a whole, and unless we take a vote as a full council, they will not come to the committee as a whole. Okay, so what I'm, that's the reason why I'm requesting this document to be brought up. Okay?
Thanks.
Unless there's any other questions, we're going to take a vote so that we can...
Yeah, I have a question. So on the previous meeting, the committee of the hall that we have, we were requesting a couple of people, and I just wanted to clarify which one of those people's are.
Sorry, that what?
We were requesting several people to come in front of the...
Exactly, exactly.
And I just want to clarify who are those, I want to ask the questions again and make the notes and make sure that we're requesting the proper people. So on the motion that it was...
Again, the motion is to bring it up so that we can, so that the full council can take the motion to request those people to come in front of the committee as a whole.
Yeah, and who are those people?
That would be the personal director, Frank Bonet, and the budget director, Mark Ianello. I believe that those are the only two people that...
City attorney and...
And the city attorney.
And the city attorney, I'm sorry.
And the planning director, Teresa Park.
No, we took Teresa Park out.
That wasn't necessary. She wasn't necessary.
So there were three people that the committee as a whole requested.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I want to clarify.
No, but...
No, we took the motion, we took Teresa out.
No, she was, yeah, we decided that, since we were discussing policymaking, that getting the director of one department to come would not be right without inviting everybody.
Exactly.
Yes, that's why we took Teresa out.
So for that reason, we decided not to invite Ms. Parks, but to invite the main people, which would be Frank Bonet...
The city attorney.
Ianello and the city attorney.
And Mr. Ryanello.
Okay.
Okay, so again, that's the reason why I'm requesting to bring this document from table ma, from committees matter, in order to take a vote and request that these individuals be present at the committee as a whole. Okay? So let's take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I would like to enter the motion to request the presence of personal director Frank Bonet, budget and finance director Mark Ianello, and our city attorney to be present the next committee as a whole.
I will make that motion, and I would add to that motion, I think we should CC the mayor that the council has invited.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
We second.
Discussion.
Okay.
Councillor President, we should clarify that...
I'm sorry?
We should clarify the committee in the hall will be this Thursday, December 17.
Yes.
Yeah.
Question about that. Are we going to have committee as a whole first and then ordinance?
We can decide that tonight.
Okay.
Okay, question.
Yes.
Are we allowed, are we allowed on these three people the proper amount of time for them to come in front of the committee of the hall? It's going to be within...
There has been plenty of time, they had enough time.
I mean, I'm just saying, according to the regulations, you know, are we allowed on enough time?
There is enough time.
Or because I just don't want to eventually say, oh, it was not enough time, this, this.
No, there is enough time. There has been communications first by me individually...
Yeah, but we're taking the vote tonight.
Yes.
So tonight, that's when the start, the times start counting.
But there should have been sufficient time to prepare.
All right, no problem. I just want to make sure that we...
I understand, I understand. Okay, there is a motion to request the presence of the personal director, the budget and finance director, and the city attorney. Motion has been made, has been properly seconded, and there was the addition...
Well, I'm making the motion, and as you author the motion, I'm saying we should CC the mayor.
Okay. Okay, let's take a vote.
Yeah.
Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
We want to remand that to...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to remand it back to the committee as a whole?
Do you have to do that? Can the president do that?
Either way.
Either way.
Either way is fine.
I remand it back to the committee as a whole.
Okay.
Document 32215.
All right.
We need a motion for that?
No.
No, the president could say it.
Okay, there was one more document that we needed to exclude in the, as an emergency.
Yes, this document was inadvertently included in other appropriation documents in finding packages, I think in document 335, probably the very first page. It should have been a separate document. It's a memorandum from Mr. Pena requesting, Commissioner Pena, I should say, requesting an appropriation for referral to the subcommittee, Councillor President, if I may.
That's not the same document?
That is document 34215. We are, I would like to enter the motion to suspend the rule and take it as an emergency so that I can send it to the Budget and Finance Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly seconded to suspend the rule and take document 34215 as an emergency, so that it can be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. Unless there's any discussion, I'm going to call for a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I'm sending document 34215 to the Budget and Finance Committee. Okay, Councillor, unless there was any other document in the table matters...
President, point of parliamentary inquiry?
Yes.
So I know that our distinguished colleague from District D brought forth a question regarding the timing, and I was coming, I was going through my book here to try to find that out. Under our code, under 2.04130, it says, "Appearance by city officers and employees before the council." It says that the city council shall give at least five days' written notice to any person that shall require to appear in accordance with the provisions of the section. The notice shall not be effective until it has been delivered in hand to such individual. So if we're planning on meeting on Thursday, as a colleague from District D is saying, that's not five days. So we have a bit of a procedural question here that we needed to grasp or grasp...
Okay, will you read that again, please?
Sure, this is, I'll repeat this section again. A 2.04.130, letter B.
Subsection B?
Letter B.
Okay.
"The city council shall give at least five days' written notice to any person that shall require to appear in accordance with the provisions of the section. The notice shall not be effective until it has been delivered in hand to such individual."
Okay, so it requires a five days' notice?
Hand delivery.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor, the plan, in that section, does it say that it requires the full council make that invitation?
The title of this, of this section is called, "Appearance of city officers and employees before the council."
Okay.
I'll read the whole thing, it's very brief. Letter A.
Okay.
"The city council may require any city official, I mean officer, employer, or member of any multiple-member body to appear before the city council to give such information as the city council may require in relation to the municipal services, functions, powers, or duties which are within the scope of responsibility of such person." Then comes section B, which I just read. I'll read it again, are we all set on that?
No, no, section B makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
It's not clear to me that this request that's been made, I think this is the second time I hear that, that they want any... I think this is the second time I hear that, that they want an invitation from the full council in order to make themselves available. It's not clear to me that that's what the rules take.
And then letter C, "Any action taken under the section shall require not less than five affirmative votes as required by section 3.5 of the charter."
So there was five votes?
Five votes.
Five votes.
The committee as a whole.
Five votes of the council or five votes of councilors?
Of the council. "Any action taken under the section shall require not less than five affirmative votes as required by section 3.5." So let me go to section 3.5. Entitled "Lecturesize the Powers, Corm, Rules of Procedure," and it's fairly long.
No, all I want to know is if it was sufficient, because the committee as a whole basically has everybody that's on the council.
Well, the question is whether the committee as a whole by five members make that request or whether it's a request of the full council. And the city attorney is saying that it should be of the full council.
Okay, so we're going to do that here?
May I come?
We did that here.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Now, that, obviously, that poses a problem for the committee as a whole to meet on Thursday, because that's not going to be, we're not going to have the five days.
Right.
So my suggestion is that we reschedule the committee as a whole for another, sometime in the new year, and...
See, that's why I had suggested that maybe we wanted to send it to ordinance so that it would have continuation, because I didn't, you know, I'm not sure.
It would still be the same problem. It would still be the same problem.
So...
To me, to me, it is a shame that we have to, in order to communicate and to get cooperation from the executive branch, that we have to go through this process. It is shameful. I personally believe that. And this is a very important matter that we should address. And again, I find it totally outrageous that the administration would not be willing to cooperate in this matter. Why? Okay, I question why, but that will, I think eventually...
It doesn't matter. I mean, it looks like the bulk of the council, not the bulk, everybody here is okay with having the discussion, you know, on a policy level. And I think that we're okay from that standpoint. The only question is, should we continue to just leave it in the committee as a whole and wait for it?
I believe that it's better to continue through the committee as a whole, because all the councils...
And then everybody.
Needs to have, needs to get this information and have some input.
Right.
Okay, so we need to change, we need to change the date of the committee as a whole. Possibly, let me look at the calendar.
January 5th would be the first meeting?
January, hold on a second. We are, we're going to have the sworn ceremony on January 4th. So January 5th will be the full council.
Right.
And after that, it would be the 6th or the 7th. There is nothing, let me see, for the next...
For tomorrow.
There's not, I don't think there would be anything that we can not delay with the budget and finance committee on the 6th. So why don't we schedule it for the 6th and see what happens?
It's three kings.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I know that. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, for the 6th?
If we schedule for January 6th...
I don't think that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So that will give them the five, plenty of time, the five days more than...
So just a question, do we have a regularly scheduled meeting after inauguration on January 5th?
Yes.
So inauguration 5th, full regular city council meeting on the 4th, I'm sorry. Fourth inauguration, 5th is the regular city council meeting, and the 6th, you're looking to have a committee in the whole meeting.
Okay?
All right.
That's it.
Do we, we didn't take a vote on the...
It's just in referral at this point. If you're scheduling a date, I don't know if it needs a vote.
Okay. So we are giving them enough time, and, okay. Are there any other items on table matters that councilors would like to pull out? If there is none, then what I would like to do is refer the new business to the subcommittees. Document 33315, handicap parking, to the ordinance committee. Document 33415, city improvement. I don't know where to send this document, to be honest.
No, to ordinance.
I thought of sending it to, I thought of sending it to the housing committee.
Housing committee.
What are the housing, what improvement we're going to get? Like, what is it?
City improvement, the housing committee, see?
Corróni, yes.
I have, public is, public safety would not be the right then. The ordinance committee would not be the right committee. So it seems to me that the housing committee...
No, no, no.
Houses, houses.
Budget and finance, because we need to know...
Budget and finance.
I'm going, I'm going to send it to the housing committee and leave it to the discretion of the committee to what to do with this document.
I suggest committee in the whole.
We table it in the full council?
Committee in the whole.
Yeah, committee in the whole.
The committee?
Committee in the whole, because everybody will be there.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The only committee that was quiet was person...
So committee as a whole, yes.
Sandy was loving it right now.
What would be the preference? Housing committee or the committee as a whole?
Committee as a whole.
The committee as a whole?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to send it to the committee as a whole. Document 33615, livery and tax, taxi license process is going to the ordinance committee. Document 33715, e-commerce exchange zone to the ordinance committee. Document 33815 to the budget and finance committee. Document 33915 to the budget and finance committee. Document 34015 to the housing committee. Document 34115 to the housing committee. Counselor, just one point of information. I received communication from the governor of the city of Santo Domingo in the Dominican Republic, that they wanted to come to our swearing ceremony.
Wonderful.
And it's my understanding that the governor and two mayors and several city councils wants to come to our swearing ceremony.
Santo Domingo, east?
Huh?
North?
East, east and...
East?
The east and the Calera.
I don't know, I don't know about the east.
No, no, no. Let me, let me mention about the, I was going to mention something about the east. The mayor, of the, the mayor, one of those who was planning to come, was killed today.
Oh, my God.
Yes. Him and his guard were shot by a person, we don't know, I don't know the exact detail, but it was, he was shot by a person who was doing business for the company that the mayor owns privately, so. I don't know what's going to happen, but I would, hopefully, I would have some additional information as to what's going to happen.
Is he alive?
Huh?
No.
No, 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 he was killed. His life, his security guard was killed, and the guy who shot the mayor and the security guard was also killed, so.
Wow.
Okay, committee meetings. The budget and finance is meeting tomorrow. The ordinance committee is meeting on Thursday. The committee as a whole has been delayed. We have no personal committee meetings, and...
Housing.
That's it.
And that's it, yes.
Well, just like to wish a Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Hanukkah, which I always say, and Kwanzaa. I always go as to as many names, as many as I can remember. And Happy Holidays to all, and a prosperous New Year.
Thank you. I would like to enter the motion to adjourn.
So moved, go.
Yes. I just want to take a moment, just, we have one of our colleagues here. It's been a bit of a tradition in the past that, at least when I was on the council earlier on, and I think council, the council vice president was there with me, we would always say a couple of words to our colleagues that are leaving at their last minute. So if it's all right with you, I don't want to take a lot of time off.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to take just a moment to thank Mr. Toomey, Roger Toomey, for his good work and service to our city for the last eight years. Your son did an outstanding job today, Mr. Toomey, on encapsulating your eight years and the kind of impact that you had in our city, and I wish you the very best, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I'm hoping that at the first meeting of the council in January, we can have the Counselor Neda Aquino and Counselor Eileen Bernard so that we can provide them with a resolution, but also we can take, finally, we can take the picture. Okay?
Picture tonight?
So Roger, you're going to have to come back one more time.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, yeah, we always used to, in addition to that, we used to do this for, like, holidays. Everybody would go around and say something real quick. But now, just, Counselor Toomey, I too appreciate everything you've done for our city. I know it's been tough with all these different kinds of bodies that you've had to work with. And it's been fascinating that you've managed to work with everybody so well. And I want to thank you and let you know that my children also think that you're a wonderful person, too, and they appreciate you as well, you and Marilyn.
I just wanted to say something really short. I don't want to keep you over your nap time. Anything after 10:00. But I really appreciate all of the knowledge that you have brought on the council. I know that I've had questions sometimes or things that I didn't understand, and I would come in and you'd be sitting there, and if I had a question, or you always gave me the options. You didn't say, this is how it is, or you said, you know, this is what it, what I think it should be, A or B, or, and you make your own decision, and I appreciate you being impartial and not ever saying, you know, this is how you should vote, or this is how you should say something, or whatever. I think that that speaks a lot for itself, because as we know in politics, there's a lot of nice stuff, backstabbing and stuff like that, and I wanted, and I just wanted to say that you are such an awesome person, and we're going to miss you here. We're going to miss you here a lot, and Marilyn, we're giving him back to you now, Marilyn. We're going to give him back to you, but he's going to be missed here. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
How am I going to let pass this opportunity just to say bye to a great friend? A person who, everybody has been expressed how well appreciated you are for all of us. And I'm sure that this is not going to be the last time, because I know that you're going to be participating in all the events. I can see that. I can see that you're going to continue doing that, and I make a promise very loud and clear and in front of everybody that I'm not going to bring any candy to anyone. You are going to be my favorite, my only one, and I will never go to do that, okay? And thank you for everything.
Did you hear that?
Yes, no candy.
Yes, go ahead.
Roger, I would like to thank you very much for your time in the city council and your dedication towards the city of Lawrence and the citizens of our community. I would like to thank you for being that voice for my district. A lot of people appreciate your service up there, and a lot of people really like you in my district. And it's because you were there all the time, and they appreciate your dedication. Thank you so much, and on behalf of District D, I would like to express those thank yous.
Anybody else?
At this point, I've always called you Mr. Toomey, but at this point, I actually like to call you Roger, and that's with the utmost respect. And I say that because I recall the day I met you. It was a very sunny day, approximately sometime in August. And we met at the corner of Broadway and Canal Street. And we were introduced by a very outspoken gentleman. You might remember Carlos Capana. And when you met me, you pulled me aside, and you said, "Young man, always follow your dreams and stay true to yourself." And I've kept that with me, and I've kept it because I know you meant it. I know you were running for office at that point, and not knowing you, and because of those words, I said, "I'm going to hold a sign for this guy." And I did, and I am proud I did back then. It proved me that I was right. We've had had instances in which we had differences of opinions, but at the same time, we were respectful to one another. There hasn't been a single day in which I have, I could say, wow, Roger disrespected me. That has never happened, and to me, that's the world. Now, I'm going to speak on behalf of Denise. And I know she's not a city counselor, but Denise looks up to you and to Marilyn. She always tells me every time she sees you guys, "I want us to grow like them." So coming from her, I'm pretty sure it's significant, and I want to take her advice there. And I want to follow your path and Marilyn's path and grow to be like you guys. So, thank you.
A little tip.
No candy, no candy.
A little suggestion, hugger. Period. Just hugger, okay? I'm a hugger. I love to hug people, well, male and female, it doesn't matter to me. And that's part of what I'm going to miss here, because I can remember coming into the office, and the first thing that a lot of young ladies used to do is to come up to me and give me a little hugger, hugger, kiss on the cheek, you know? And I, that's what I'm going to miss. I'm going to miss a lot of that, because it's, I think it's part of the culture, but I'm hoping it's part of what I am to them, too.
We rubbed our bodies.
Well, thank you very much. I really do appreciate all the compliments, and I, you know, it's strange. I, it just blows my mind, it really does, because I just, this is something, this is a job I did for eight years. I love doing it. I love mixing with people. And I think this is just something that you do normally, you know? So I'm a little befuddled sometimes by all the accolades, because it's not something that I'm looking for or anything of that nature. It's just something that I do. I like doing this. So I do appreciate all of your comments, and especially the hugs.
Okay, councilors, I would like to enter the motion to adjourn. Motion has been made and properly second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.